This meeting of Jamestown City Council, Monday, June 26th, voting session over. Whether clerk please call roll.
Councilman Sheldon?
Here.
Brackman?
Here.
Caruba?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Faulkner?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Deversa?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
President Dolez?
Here. This time we'll have a Pledge of Allegiance to flag. Please remain standing for the indication which will be given by the Attorney General William Miller of new creation assembly of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty as its own.
Please pray with me. Eternal Father, strong to safe, come be with us tonight. Give us your peace, your strength, and wisdom, and the comfort of your presence. We present to you, ourselves, the citizens of this fair land, the business of our city. Summer is upon us, and all the festivals and events that have been planned, planned, and put together, have created excitement that we will all enjoy. Bless the work of our hearts and our hands as people gather in the many venues this summer and celebrate the time, the graduations, and their plans for the future. We pray for the many employees of the city, that you would keep them safe on the job, that finances would be sufficient for every project undertaken by this council. We ask for your blessing upon our citizens, the many friends and families who call Jamestown their home. Into your hands we commit the discussions and decisions that take place here tonight. Glorify yourself, and let us live in your light. Amen.
This time I'll ask for approval of the minutes from the May 26th, 2023 voting session, followed by Councilwoman Caruba. Do we have any messages from the mayor?
We do. Dear council members, in June 2023, we have welcomed seven new employees to the City of Jamestown. Jose Roden and Gregory Og of the Jamestown Urban Renewal Agency, Michael Christie, Brianna Ingerson, Andrew McKillop, Matthew Mandola, and Benjamin Troche of the Jamestown Fire Department. I ask that these new hires be acknowledged and welcomed to the city at the June 26th, 2023 City Council meeting. On June 22nd, 2023, I recognize by proclamation the retirement of one City of Jamestown employee, Debbie Patty, Clerk's Office. Attached inside the retirement proclamation, honoring and congratulating our retiring Dear City Council members, in accordance with the authority vested in me by the Charter of the City of Jamestown, I hereby designate Carol Mallach to 001 Forest Avenue, Apartment Two, Jamestown, New York 14701, as Deputy City Comptroller for the City of Jamestown, effective June 26th, 2023. Very truly yours, City of Jamestown Edward A. Sunquist.
Thank you. Just a point of reference to, just wanted to, in reference to Debbie Patty's retirement, again, you know Debbie worked many years, retired and came back to help out in the 47 years of service. She lives in the City of Jamestown, so very happy to wish her well in her second retirement. I think she'll come back when I know. All right. At this time, we give opportunities for people to address the council. If you wish to address the City Council, please step up to one of the lights, keep giving the name and address, and then we'll trade hours to five minutes.
Excuse me, Rust on Figlio 212 Wall Avenue. And I would like to talk about the YMCA. We are trying to build a new YMCA, and I hope everyone on council is aboard on it, and I'm sure they are, but the community needs to be on board, and I'm just going to throw some figures at you so you know. The YMCA provided financial assistance to 1,652 community members. The YMCA served 67,425 meals served, summer and after school, at 24 locations. 1,073 kids taught lifesaving safety around water and skills. 2,162 kids served in and out of school time programs. 137 seniors cared for each week through wellness check-ins. 135 volunteers mobilized, conducting 5,240 community service hours. And we need this, do why, and I hope council and the community supports it. I am on the board, to let everybody know. Also, it's probably going to, if this doesn't happen, I would say in less than five, I don't want to give an exact figure, maybe two, three years, there probably will be no why. Financially, we're not going to be able to do it. So we need it, and we need community support. Thank you.
Thank you, Rust. Anyone else would like to address the council this evening?
Anthony Toto, 144 Clifton Avenue, Jamestown, New York. Want to address a couple of calls I made to the Jamestown Police, 624 this year and 625 respectively. One was answered by the desk sergeant, Mr. Conti. He's familiar with the complaints I make every day. I want to say something right now to the chief. You wouldn't be hearing from me, chief, if I didn't have a reason for a complaint. Now, constantly, all I hear, Mr. Conti said, "Conti, well, we didn't issue any tickets." Subsequent, Mr. Johansson also didn't issue any tickets, claiming the police were on foot on Maple Street, it's not my residence, but I stay there a lot, for a 30-minute period, no tickets issued. Now, the reason I call the police is because I have a bona fide complaint, and that complaint is quite bizarre, because the kind of noise that is around me is 24/7. Seven days a week, nobody would tolerate that complaint. Now, when I make a grievance, by definition, under the Constitution, I'm not happy, isn't that correct? A grievance, which we have a right to make under the First Amendment, signifies the fact that I'm upset about something. Now, when I talk to Mr. Johansson, and he infers that I have some kind of a character or mental issue because I'm making a grievance, and he is opening himself up and the City of Jamestown for liability, and believe me, I've been in court already over this issue for the amount of $10 million against the WCA, prior to them being taken care of, the issue lasted two years. If I have a bona fide cause of action, I will be in court if someone addresses my character and my psychological nature in that manner. Now, the reason that I call the police is I, nobody, that's not so surprise, the reason I call the police is because I see speeding, motorcycles doing wheelies at 60 miles an hour in a residential area, excessive traffic, people making noise from 1:00 in the morning till about 5:00 in the morning, and then people start making more noise. So imagine going through that seven days a week. Now, when I started this appeal concerning the improper judgment or order of Judge Panabianco, although this has been a menace for me, this has become even more of a menace. Now, I'm sitting in court last year, and Judge Panabianco has given every, even offered me two parking tickets and a dismissal. If you can't comply with the law in regards to what needs to be done as far as a punishment or what needs to be done as far as taking points away, then you're going to have this issue. So we have an issue here where the police are negligent, we have an issue here where the court system is handing out parking tickets, rewarding people for speeding, loud exhaust, reckless driving, and that's what's happening around me, has been happening around me. I get the excuse, "Well, Tony, you want us to bring a car down there just for you?" Chief Snelling started with that bizarre response. I'm not asking for a police car to come and sit in front because, you know what, I'm special? I don't want police cars, I don't want to have contact with the police. What I do want is everybody to be responsible and comply with the law, not be negligent, and not to allow a person, a citizen in the City of Jamestown, to be treated in the manner that I am. Now, today I was almost involved in an accident, because since I also started this appeal, magically, people are starting to tailgate me, I'm seeing people with blue lights that are flashing from blue to white as they approach me. Now, what kind of vehicle traffic law covers what kind of lights, chief? Maybe you can answer that question. Now, the second thing I want to talk about, if I have a little time, is the immigrant problem and the way it was addressed by our county executive. Our county executive is certainly correct that we don't, can't afford to aid people because we just don't have the resources, and it's more than just not being able to aid people, it's a violation of the law. Now, there was a real bizarre article in the Pulse Journal not too long within the last month, rewarding or justifying people from coming without documentation into this country. Well, we need to take care of them. Is that true? My grandparents, everybody who came through here, had to come through here legally.
Mr. Tony, you have five minutes, your round, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else would like to address the council?
Dr. Champ, 225 Wall Street. The Police Department of Jamestown is more than capable of reacting, I can't speak individually for his issues, but I want to applaud the Police Department for their ability to go after the gift grant, and that will augment this Police Department under Chief Jackson's leadership. And I look forward to the results of that, and certainly it's going to enhance the coverage and the purpose behind it, and I guess one of the shining stars as well, is that it's all going to be paid for by a grant. That's not usually the case, and that's my other message tonight, is that to understand the consolidated funding application process, one has to understand how the money is doled out on the state level. Each of those particular programs that are cited in this resolution have a track of money assigned to it, and by assigning that money, then everybody who's eligible in certain economic development districts can apply for it, it's on a competitive basis in points. But in no case is it something that must be treated lightly in last-minute introductions. I know Krista and her staff are extremely hard at everything they do, and I can't help but say that over and over again, but I think it's been shared locally that in order for things to be successful, the two branches of government have to work together, executive and legislative, the judicial is another side element here, and they have to enforce their court actions. So when we don't have that process, and you find out things are happening by virtue of the SAFE program, and now the SAFE NOW program, being kind of launched autonomously in some format, now maybe that'll be acceptable, and maybe it'll be natural for those processes to be unfolded, and I don't think it should be that way at all. I think that in every case when a new program or project is thought about in the process of developing it, it must be shared with the financial legislative side of this committee in order to determine impact, and that impact is return on investment and local cost. Now, in the consolidated funding applications which you're getting involved with tonight, and again, we're up against a deadline. Why are we always up against a deadline? I know that's a natural process for going after money outside of the city, but it doesn't have to always be that way. If information and ideas are shared in a commonality approach, most of this stuff would be completed without a lot of politics and a lot of unfair judgment. Now, as I said, the consolidated funding application is competitive, but you must remember that every grant that is applied for has a local share, and in-kind contributions, I don't have the opportunity, my iPad went dead, to cite specifically the reference that they cannot be used, and you must define what that is. Now, going through the potentially four applications, and I don't have a problem with them other than having you to know about them, and when I total up the total amount of what those applications would mean locally, you're looking at a local contribution of 901,000 of them. In some cases, one particularly has to be paid for if you're lucky to get it upfront, in other words, the disbursement doesn't take place until you've spent the money. And in order for this to be successful, these type of programs have to have an area in front of the, I would say, the audit and control and the case or the financial committee to really understand what the local impact is on grants. No grant should go through any process at all in this city until it's had proper area in advance. Shouldn't be launched, shouldn't be talked about, it should be done that way. So are you prepared to put together a financing packet that will go after these grants, because there's two ways you can look at it? We're going to get all this money if we only put up 10%, but do you have the 10%? So that's my question, in some cases it's more than 10%, it's 15 or 25%. But remember, you've got to have the money, and it's got to be defined in the application of where that money's come from, from next year's budget, from the access of American Rescue Plan money, which probably you can't use because it's federal money again, so it's all local money. So how are you going to entertain an application or a grant without understanding it first of all? Does everybody understand what a Jackson Taylor pump track is? Please enlighten me. And also, what are we going to do when the money runs out, American Rescue Plan? How are you going to accomplish the O and M, operation maintenance costs associated with everything that we spent the money down on? The next two or three years, your budgets are going to be difficult, not alone with this, but with anything else that you try to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, Mr. Champ, those grants say you can apply statewide up to millions of dollars. That doesn't mean the city's going to get 15 million, so we understand that, we could only end up only getting 10,000. I just want to make that clear, that $900,000 is for the whole amount, and the whole amount is statewide.
No, it's not, it's for Jamestown's share if you actually were successful with these four grants. It's Jamestown's share. Give you an example, the New York Main Street project, $20,000 is the cheapest one that you go after, that's the minimum you go after. Your local share is 5% of $1,000. If you go after the Jackson Taylor Park for a total amount which is indicated at $3 million, your local share is $450,000, just 15% of 3 million. Every one of these has a special track to go after, they're not combined, they're all separately entertained with their separate requirements.
Yes, I can address that. First, I'll just say, the consolidated funding applications come out once a year. Typically, in years past, the way the schedule falls, our voting session happens in time, so it happens just before submissions are due. This year, it's, we have to submit resolutions an entirely, an entire month early because of the way our voting session falls. So I would be totally upfront with you, we still have a lot of work to do on our applications because it's a whole month in advance of where we typically are ready to submit. So knowing that any grant that we receive has to also be approved by council to accept it, we're still asking to, while we're still completing our applications and understanding what all the details of each one is, that there's still another opportunity to vet those applications and vote on whether or not to accept the responsibility of taking those funds, should we be awarded. To address Mr. Champ's points, there are some that do allow in-kind matching, and there are some that do not. So while we're working on putting together our partnerships, there are a couple that we are looking to partner with other agencies on, there would be a combination of matching funds, it wouldn't solely rest on the city to determine or to come up with those, those matching funds. So it's all details, he's right, this has been a rush process for us this year, it's certainly not ideal, but we want to make sure that we don't preclude ourselves from being able to submit applications, and that we will work out the details over the course of the next month, also knowing that council will ultimately vote again on whether or not to accept those grant funds, should we be awarded.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to address the council?
Melissa Catterdaddy, 346 Faulkner Street. I wish I had a positive thing to say tonight. One concern that I've had over the last three years is trees blocking signs, and it's happening again. It's happening every year, the leaves come back, and then you can't see stop signs, you can't see no turns on left. So down on Washington Street, this beautiful road we have, they just put signs blocking in front of a tree. And I guess I've just, maybe it's just me, and that I'm extra cautious when I'm on the road, making sure that, you know, I am following the rules of the road, because, and I noticed all the signs. I mean, there's probably 17 different signs that I've seen within the last week and a half that are blocking a street sign, a stop sign, a stop sign that's so important for vehicles to stop at. I don't know if you've ever driven around Jamestown, but people don't stop. I saw it, I see it every day. And I guess I'm just, you know, every year, and I know Dan Stone is the best of the best, but what I don't understand is that he is also the city arborist, and we have a city that is tree city for, what, 42 years, 43, but we don't take care of our trees. When I say get rid of trees, I don't mean get rid of them. One of the things that I've been looking up, because I don't want to come here and sound stupid, so pruning trees are so important. If you see a tree in front of your house and it's growing another tree from the bottom, prune it. How hard is that? It saves the city, it saves the, the, the house, you know, the, sorry, the homeowner, but constantly, I drive around, you know, going from one side of town to another, and I just see this constantly. There's a, there's a street sign on North Main going outside of the city that says Route 60, and it's covered by a tree from the cemetery. You know, and most of these trees are covered by, you know, either the property owner, or it's a city tree, I mean, you know, they, trees just grow. They don't say, "Oh, well, we're going to grow this way or grow that way," but you can maintenance them to, you know, trim some leaves, and when there's a storm, people don't have to be afraid to drive around the city that a tree might fall on them. So, so I just come to you and I say, "Please, try to make this a priority." You know, I'm not asking you to go and chop down trees, but there's a, you know, I've said it, I've said it again, again, and again, the stop sign right by my house, covered, you know, but, but I feel like we need to be more proactive when it comes to this. When the fall, or when the spring comes, we know that trees are going to grow, and maybe send people out and make sure that these trees are taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to address the council? Saying no, we'll move on. Do we have any presentations, petitions, or other communications? Now we'll move on to reports from our standing committees, and we'll start with our Finance Committee, and the first six resolutions will be sponsored by Councilwoman Caruba.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing Corporation Council LA Des Romando on paralegal time to table to attend the New York State Public Employer Labor Relations Association Annual Training Conference to be held July 10 through 12, 2023, in Saratoga Springs, New York, with expenses paid pursuant to Section 77-B of the General Municipal Law.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the executive assistant to the mayor be authorized to attend the Mayor's Innovation Project Summer Meeting on August 9 through 11 in Square in Pennsylvania, with expenses paid pursuant to Section 77-B of the General Municipal Law.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the fiscal year 2023 annual action plan, including specific CDGB and home activities contained that ran to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Communications Commission for the Affordable Connectivity Program Outreach Grant in the amount of $150,000 in no sense.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolez?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the SHI International Corporation and BECC Electric for the purpose of purchasing and installing network expansion equipment for a total of $12,140 in no sense.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolez?
Aye. Resolution 7 through 16 will be sponsored by Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the City Comptroller to make the following amendment to the 2023 general fund budget for the purchase of the network racks as follows. Increase appropriate
Increase appropriations equipment eight point one six eight zero point zero two zero zero point zero 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 zero, twelve thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and no cents. Decrease appropriations contingent account eight point one nine nine zero point zero four zero zero point zero 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 zero, twelve thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and no cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with JMI and ratifying the sale of SPL number three seven zero point one eight dash one dash one seven located on Lafayette Street in the amount of four thousand dollars and no cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hiring of one part-time senior account clerk within the office of the City Clerk slash Treasurer. Just note, this was the retirement you mentioned early, and this is funded in the two thousand twenty-three budget.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hiring of one part-time crime analyst and one part-time give coordinator assistant in the Jamestown Police Department.
Any questions or comments?
Just to note that these are paid for by the give grant.
Thank you. Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hiring of one clerk, two, in the Jamestown Police Department.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hiring of an engineer position in the Department of Public Works.
Thank you.
Just to note that this is a funded position with the movement of Mark to the department head position.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hiring of a laborer in the Department of Public Works. Again, this is a two thousand twenty-three budget, budgeted position, and due to a retirement.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the City Controller to make the following amendment to the two thousand twenty-three general fund budget for the replacement of fencing as follows. Increase appropriations equipment eight point seven one one zero point zero two zero zero point zero 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 zero, six thousand and forty dollars and no cents, and decrease appropriations contingent account eight point one nine nine zero point zero four zero zero point zero 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 zero, six thousand, forty dollars and no cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a short one, and I think it's important that everybody understands. Whereas the county of Chautauqua here to apply for state funding under the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services give grant program for two thousand twenty-three, and whereas the county's application has been approved and a portion of the grant funds must be shared within the City of Jamestown Police Department, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the police chief be, and they hereby are authorized and directed to participate and give for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-three, through July, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, with funding in the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and no cents provided by the State of New York.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I do. I just want to make a note that in the years past, I, I did not have a chance to get the exact numbers, but I spoke with Chief Jackson in the years past. It's been roughly around seventy thousand and hasn't increased for years. So, this is a significant increase for a lot of reasons.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I'll just add that obviously New York State felt the need to give the increased dollar amount to the county and the City of Jamestown due to the increased crime and what's going on in there, saying otherwise they wouldn't be allocating more funding such as this.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is resolved that the mayor and his authorized representatives be and hereby is authorized to enter into a global settlement agreement not to exceed the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars and no cents in the matter of seeking versus City of Jamestown, subject to the approval as to form by the Corporation Council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, Resolution seventeen, rule twenty, will be sponsored by Councilwoman Caruba.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any documents related to the submission of the two thousand twenty-three consolidated funding application, New York Department of State, under the Environmental Facilities Corporation, green innovation grant for Tracy Pleasant faced renovation, and is also hereby authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents with New York Department of State should the City of Jamestown be successful in securing funding through the consolidated funding application submission process.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any documents related to the submission of the two thousand twenty-three consolidated funding application, New York Department of State, under the Local Waterfront and Lightization Program, and is also hereby authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents with New York Department of State should the City of Jamestown be successful in securing funding through the consolidated funding application submission process.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is resolved that the City Council of Jamestown, New York, is fully committed and supportive of the consolidated funding application submit, submission by the City of Jamestown for the New York Main Street program for twenty thousand dollars and no cents, five percent or one thousand, fifty-three dollars and no cents, of which will be required as a local match, and be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any documents related to the submission of the two thousand twenty-three consolidated funding application, the New York Main Street program, and is also hereby authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents with Housing Trust Home Corporation should the City of Jamestown be successful in securing funding through the consolidated funding application submission process.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the, excuse me.
Where's the fifty-three dollars come from, the five percent match?
Five hundred feet.
It's not mathematical, that's why. No, it's not. And I know that Paula figured it out. I, I think what it is, is because the twenty thousand dollars for, that doesn't make sense.
It's five, twenty-two, six-five percent.
Yeah, it just needs to be a thousand dollars.
I mean, it's a math.
Okay. Somebody to have an amendment.
The resolution.
Yep. Do you want me to propose an amendment?
Go away.
Sure. So I'd lay up, I'd like to make an amendment to Resolution number nineteen, wherein the final, in the first resolved, changing the amount of five percent or one thousand dollars and no cents, of which will be required as a local match.
Does that make sense?
Thank you, yes.
Is that good? Will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment? We need a second.
Yes, we need a second, second.
Anderson, a second. Clerk, please poll the council on the amendment.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
actual resolution. Poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Good catch there.
Yes, thank you for the catch. I'm reading McDonald's.
Especially if it was so long, somebody, you jump through that.
So, thank you, Mr. President. Resolution twenty, resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any documents related to the submission of the two thousand twenty-three consolidated funding application, New York Department of State, under the Environmental Protection Plan, and is also hereby authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents with New York Department of State should the City of Jamestown be successful in securing funding through the consolidated funding application submission process.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
We already were into your business, didn't we?
Twenty-one, yeah, twenty-five.
The next, twenty-one through twenty-five will be Councilwoman Eklund.
Resolution twenty-one, resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any documents related to the submission of the two thousand twenty-three CFA, New York Department of State, under the Local Government Efficiency, LGE, grant program for the Shared Services Project in partnership with the Chautauqua County Health Department, helping homes inspection, capacity building, and is also hereby authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents with New York Department of State should the City of Jamestown be successful in securing funding through the CFA submission process.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Yes.
Councilman Brack, or Brackman?
Aye.
Caruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
De Verse?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution designating one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and no cents in American Rescue Plan Act, helping neighborhood funds for the purpose of cleaning the North Main Street by the public safety enhancement project to be administered by the Jamestown Urban Renewal Agency, Jura.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment. Read this as Resolution Designating one, forty-five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents in American Rescue Plan Act, Healthy Neighborhood Funds for the Purpose of Funding Lighting Only on the North Main Street by the public safety enhancement project to be administered by the Jamestown Urban Renewal Agency.
Second. Yeah, second. Will the clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Councilman Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.